Yeah.
I think I'll just be meeting on council to order. May I have a motion to adopt the May 29, 2017 special meeting agenda as presented? Counselor Ross. Counselor Thompson. Please go ahead.
I would like to have the agenda amended to include questions from the public and comments from the public. And I see that we have quite a number in our galleries this afternoon. So if we amended the agenda to allow that, could we allow that during the discussions that were undergoing this afternoon?
Not unless there was one that this would have counseled. This is like a regular meeting. That would take the anonymous. Were you also including the media in the movement?
Absolutely.
Do I have a second for that?
Counselor Trump.
Second to the amendment? Counselor Butler.
I would support that motion, but to have the question period at the end of the meeting, just as we normally do with a regular meeting and with a special meeting, the question period comes at the end. I'm just concerned that with heightened emotions here today, that things could quickly become into a back-and-forth type discussion. And I'd really like to hear the chamber's presentation, council's response, and no decisions are being made here today, as I understand, on the funding. It's just to receive information. So if question period came at the end, I just think it might maintain more order in the gallery.
Actually, to get a clarification on that, Counselor Butler, there is regarding a decision on the matter. If you read your agenda, recommendation on item 3A. It's for discussion and decision. So may I have all -- sorry. Counselor Thompson, go ahead.
The reason I'm asking this is because we do want to make a decision, and we want to be very clear that the decision we're making is favorable to our parties. And I think quite a lot more particularity to the city and the taxpayers of our community. So trying to make a decision, I want to be able to hear from other parties, other than Dean and Kathy Wright, because there's some assertions and allegations contained that I think need to be answered before we can make any decision. And so that's why I made the amendment that I have made.
I definitely concur to that, Counselor Thompson. But again, to reiterate back to the fact that we would need unanimous vote of council, and by what I'm proceeding here, Counselor Butler will probably not be voting in favor of a unanimous decision. Counselor Butler.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. If you'll allow me to clarify why I'm not really comfortable with making a decision here today, it's for the same reasons that I walked out of the committee at the whole meeting, is because I felt the proper procedure was not being followed. And now that I have the documentation in front of me, I'd like to ask council that we again want to proceed against our service agreement, which, if you refer to Sections 11 and Section 14 of the service agreement...
Counselor Butler, you're getting ahead of yourself. We're not at that yet. We're not at Section 3A yet. We're just deciding if we're letting the public speak.
Right. And I'm explaining to you why I'm not comfortable with making a decision with public input at this point, is because the service agreement states...
Again, Section 3A is that matter regarding decisions.
Point of no, Mr. Mayor. I have the floor. Section 11 says, "Any notice required to be given by this agreement will be validly given if delivered by hand and addressed by mail..."
Counselor Butler, you're out of order.
"...which will be deemed to have been delivered by the other party two days after posting at the Grand Forks Post Office." It also states that any dispute arising between the service provider and City Hall shall be discussed and settled between the service provider's representative and the CAO.
You are out of order. Stop your grandstanding.
And I don't believe the city is following this procedure by having a public meeting.
I'm going to call the question. All in favor of the amended agenda?
Point of no, you have to vote on the amendment before you voted on the amended agenda.
The amendment. All in favor? Anyone opposed? So carried? All those in favor of the amended agenda as presented? Anyone opposed? So carried? Now, shall we move on to the registered petitions and delegations? Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. Recommendation is that council receives delegation from the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce and the memorandum as provided by staff for information and discussion purposes regarding a decision on the matter of the 2017 Fee for Service Agreement. May I have a mover, please? Counselor Thompson, second, or Counselor Hammett? Counselor Butler.
Mr. Mayor, just a housekeeping item really. You said the memorandum coming from staff. I'm just wondering why we don't have the current bylaws for the chamber included here? We have the old bylaws from 2011. And I went down to the chamber and got their current bylaws, and I'm just wondering if those should be included for council's consideration in this matter? I have them here. They were amended in 2016. Unfortunately, our liaison should have brought these to us at the time, but that was never done.
Yours, CAO.
Your worship, when I got the bylaws, they came from the corporate registry, and these are the one and only bylaws that are registered to the Congressional Chamber of Commerce.
And that would explain whether the agenda is a memorandum? Correct. Thank you. So, welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having us in this time to present what we have to offer.
Go ahead.
I'd like to thank the city and the committee at the whole for allowing us to respond to the meeting on May 15 with the Downtown Business Committee, a steering committee of the Chamber of Commerce. I'd like to remind everybody that we're a regional chamber. We span from Beavardale, Bridesville, all the way through to Christina Lake. The chamber is only in our fifth year of being born by Community Futures. They started this up in April 2012. Since I've been with the chamber, we've put together a strategic plan. I've only been with the chamber for about a year and a half, just for anybody that doesn't know. We've put together a strategic plan, a three-year plan for 2016, 17, 18. Last year, we addressed our policies, and this year, obviously, our bylaws are being addressed. So, yeah. One of our questions as the chamber is, we're wondering how the Downtown Business Committee came before you, before coming to us and telling us that there was an issue, and they are a steering committee of the chamber, so we're a little confused on how that happened. The chamber also has a funding agreement with the Downtown Business Committee. We gave them $5,000 as a startup fee. And they were also in front of us on May 11, asking for more money for their heritage sign project, which we gave them another $3,500. During that time, Kathy Korlek, our chamber liaison for the board, presented to us, but never told us there was any problems with the Downtown Business Committee, that they had issues with us. We did get a letter from Lynne Ralph on behalf of them with our bylaw challenge, that we didn't follow our bylaws. Since then, we've actually put a steering committee together to address our bylaws. And during that time, I phoned the government to find out what bylaws we had filed with the registries Canada, only to find out that we've never had bylaws followed or filed for the Chamber of Commerce since it started as the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. And with that being said, they told me when we haven't got bylaws filed, we have to follow the Board of Trade bylaws, which we actually did follow for our AGM. Our chair at the time, our president, was in a car accident and was unable to attend our meeting. So Jim, a board member from the Board of Trade in Greenwood, he chaired our meeting with the Board of Trade Act. And so we've actually followed the bylaws we were to follow without knowing it on top. We do acknowledge that the bylaws that were left in a file for us weren't followed at our AGM, but again, they're not our bylaws to be followed at this point. So, yeah, I've got to again say, we're very disappointed that the committee didn't come to the chamber before coming to the city with concerns about us. They did come about the bylaws, but they've not come for anything else. We've also been accused of lack of communication. We have asked verbally, through emails and a letter, for the minutes and the agendas for the Downtown Business Association. We have gotten some, but not all of them. The last two I've requested, I still have not gotten. For a lack of communication, we do have a chamber liaison that sits on the Downtown Business Committee's committee, Kathy Korlek, who should have been bringing this information to us, and it's not been brought to us to date. Lynne Ralph has been asked to communicate through me for check signing and any communications from the chamber, and to date does not do so. She calls the treasurer and different people, refusing to actually communicate with me. The last meeting I attended for...
May I ask you a question while it's relevant at the time?
Okay.
Because there's lots that are coming. You say there's lack of communication with the EBA or DBC, as you call it. It's come to my attention that there's also no communication within the chamber itself with one of your board members, Kathy Korlek. You've had meetings, nothing's been forwarded to her. So how do you explain that if you are accusing...
Kathy attends our meetings.
Yes, but there's been no communication whatsoever with one of your board members. How do you explain that? If you are basically being accusatory of the DBC, why is there a lack of communication within the board?
Yeah, I understand what you're saying now. I don't know how to work this.
Go ahead, just rest a moment.
I didn't know we had lack of communication with our board until just recently. Kathy attends our meetings. She gives us updates on the DBC. It's in all our minutes, if you'd like to see them. We are updated from Kathy's. So we didn't know we had a concern.
Concerned with who?
With lack of communication with the Downtown Business Committee.
No, I'm not referring to that. I'm referring to your own lack of communication internally. How would you explain that?
Okay, I don't know. We don't have lack. We have four minutes, we have meetings. We're supposed to be communicating. We thought we were communicating well, only to find out that half the meetings Kathy's not attended for the Downtown Business Committee. So I don't know what else to say, other than we thought we were...
Did you assume then also that the DBC was also communicating with you, but you weren't aware of it? Does that fall under the same parameters of what you just said?
Sorry, say that again.
You said you weren't aware that there was no communication internally, so possibly you were not aware also that there was communication from the DBC, but you were not aware of it?
Absolutely. They've obviously been talking about things and not communicated it with us and that. I mean, I don't know what to say. I have been told that I am not to attend meetings. They don't want me there. I've gone into the board for the Downtown Business Communities, some of their members, and to have conversations to find out why the lack of communication was. And I've been told it's inappropriate for me to be in their business, that I should be talking to our liaison, Kathy Korlek. And so I've tried. I've tried to do my part.
My only comment to this is, we seem to be deviating from the subject matter here of this meeting today. We keep, so to speak, downloading onto the DBC of what they did, what they didn't do. But we are here to find out if the chamber is doing what they are supposed to do, namely their constitution and bylaw. It's always simpler to state that the DBC hasn't done this, hasn't done that, but that's not the focal point here. We are here today, and we could have this meeting go on for five hours if we deviate, walk around the outside of the Cape, but we are one specific point. The recommendation is, as it speaks to it, an explanation from the chamber to explain regarding bylaws and constitution. And you say you don't have one, then where does this document come from, which refers to Section 4.2, 4.1A?
That's a documentation that we were left with in our files, and we assumed were assumed were filed by Community Futures, but they weren't.
You assumed.
Well, I'm saying, you know what?
Your former president, Mr. Cooper, has confirmed with an email to myself and council that the chamber has always followed their bylaws. So there had to be bylaws in place. This seems to be a little bit of a contradictory statement.
Well, I've got Industry Canada confirmation that they've never been filed. So I don't know what to say to you, other than they've never been filed.
Then again, seems to be a contradictory statement.
Well, if you'd like, I can get Industry Canada to send you a letter stating that, if that would make you feel better. But I personally spoke to them, because I wanted to make sure we were following the correct bylaws that were filed for the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm sorry, but none of them have been filed.
Counselor Thompson.
I turn to our acting, our interim corporate officer. The documents that you attached with the bylaw, where did you get them?
Your worship, I went to the corporate registry through the federal government of Canada, and first of all, had to trace back to find out what the governing body was for the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce. And it is the Board of Trades, and it falls upon Part 2. Now, when I talked to the lady about that, she said the only bylaw that was registered, and they have to be approved by, they call it Industry Canada, but the actual formal name of the ministry is the Ministry of Innovation, Science, and Economic Development, Canada. In order for the Chamber of Commerce to follow their bylaws, they have to be approved by this ministry, and this is the only one that the ministry has approved. So I would imagine that a bylaw would be no different than a bylaw of council if there was no other file in place, that this would be the one that would be approved.
So these bylaws were filed?
The one for 2012 that's in the actual package is the one that was approved and filed here in the ministry.
And again, to concur to that statement would be that if you had the chamber in operational status previously, prior to this latest AGM, it was stated factually that they had followed their bylaws. So I'm at a loss here, that all of a sudden, there's no bylaws, so the city has been funding an organization, as per one of our counselors made the statement at the committee of the whole meeting, I believe it was, that they've never been following their bylaws.
If we look back on the files that we have, there has never been enough quorum to follow those bylaws. I went back on all the years that we've had, and the way it's written, there's never been a quorum. And I know the bylaw you guys are referring to is not one that hadn't been followed until this year, I believe, but previous years have not followed the bylaws either.
What previous years are you referring to? Because like I said, I have a letter that...
Okay, again, I've been with the chamber for a year and a half. The files that I am left with, the people that have signed in to the people to fit our bylaws don't meet the criteria to our bylaws. Past AGMs didn't meet the criteria either. I just really feel we've been judged and juryed without even being able to speak about this. I just have to make comment on that.
I'm sorry, may I address the chair, please?
Counselor Trump.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Yeah, I believe that the Chamber of Commerce is here. They are here in good faith. They are trying to present their side of the case. We're supposed to be examining, getting information. If we actually look at our own Fee for Service Agreement with the chamber, we don't have jurisdiction over their constitution of bylaws. And this issue really shouldn't have been dealt with between the CAO and the executive director or the president of the association privately, first off, and then if that issue can't be resolved at that level, then it comes to the council. That is part of the Fee for Service Agreement that we have in place with them and their own constitution of bylaws. So I think, you know, we should give them an opportunity to just present their information and take it on the value that they are doing their very best to come and explain the situation and circumstances that they've been in. I would be very happy to see us do that. I think that's reasonable. I think that's fair. And that's...
Thank you. Very, very informative information, Counselor Tripp. So what you're asking us to do is receive their presentation and ask no questions. Considering the gallery we have in front of us here, I think this subject matter is quite important.
She just wants her board to finish the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Ross. Yes, that's what I would like.
Go ahead. Carry on.
I'll help you here. I was following along.
You were seeing your bylaws were never filed with Industry Canada?
You were talking about communication with the DBC. You're on the communication circuit.
Yeah. Obviously, you don't want to hear about the communication part of it, although that was a big part of your committee at the whole meeting on the 15th of May. I would just, you know, like to remind that we are trying to communicate. I've tried to infuse myself in the Downtown Business Committee. Mayor Conrad, I think that you remember Halloween, how I helped out with the costume and that, because nobody was there to greet you or do anything. I have tried really hard to be part of this group, but I've had some challenges.
Mr. Mayor, may I just interrupt for a second, if I may? My apologies, but you are obviously, the perception there is, I am not directing this at yourself. This is not personal, because you are the executive director. Make no mistake about that. This whole dialogue and conversation is directed at the chamber, not yourself. So please, do not take this personally when you say you feel whatever, that you're being attacked or whatever. You are speaking, and I'm just asking questions for clarification. If you take it upon yourself to be taking this personal, then I cannot say anymore.
Could you please stop interrupting her, so we could hear her presentation?
Right. Let her finish. Here, here. We don't need pontification from anybody.
Our bylaws, I'd like to remind that Counselor Chris Hammett was our committee chair for AGM in 2016, and the bylaws, again, weren't filed completely. Counselor Hammett also participated in our 2016 AGM, 2017, sorry. And then we got an email and a phone call from Kathy Korlek saying we were being challenged. So we held a special meeting to speak about it. The old board, not the new board, held a special meeting to make sure that we could move ahead. And a motion at that meeting was to welcome the new board in general or special meeting, recognize the threat of the AGM held in good faith, did not conform to all the bylaws, and the chamber and the bylaws will be reviewed at our first meeting, which we put in place a committee. How we found out our bylaws weren't filed was partly through that committee. And we've got, the committee has brought recommendations back to the board, but unfortunately, when we found out our bylaws weren't filed, we now need to relook at them as a committee because they're different than what we were anticipating. The DBC has also admitted the only reason they have challenged our bylaws is because of who was put in power, which is incorrect. We were also mentioned that we haven't followed, oh, committee of the whole talked about how we haven't been in front of you and updated you on our budget and our stuff. I remind you, February 14, Ellen Cooper was in front of you, and you had questions on our funding presentation. So if you had questions on our budget and that, I'm not sure why they weren't answered at that meeting, I wasn't able to be here, but I know Ellen did a great presentation. It's attached to this. BCRC, we recognize that we need to have a little more oversight on our subcommittees and our liaisons to make sure that our communications aren't lost. I'm at a loss really what to say to you right now. I just...
Mr. Mayor, you clearly stated that it's crucial that any operation also is backed up by Counselor Ross and Counselor Thompson, that it's crucial that all policies and bylaws are followed. And throughout this, as the new president, I've noticed all kinds of inconsistencies in this. Clearly, the service agreement hasn't been followed. We should have... Clearly, got a written letter, and we should have discussions with your CAO, but instead, now this has become a media circus. I've been dragged through this. I just volunteered to help this community, and so far, all I've dealt with is infighting. Yes, crucial that we follow policies, and no one has. We should have had a letter, so we could have done this in private, but now it's all out in the open. We should have chatted with the CAO, and we could have quickly resolved this. If I would have known ahead of time, I would have walked away, but now I've been dragged into this. I've got the Gazette telling me that I'm part of this organization that's going to fund, or not exactly.
Fly-by-night?
Fly-by-night. That I'm part of a fly-by-night. As a business owner, that destroys my reputation, and all I've done here was volunteer to be part of this. I went to the chamber meeting. I found out there's positions open, so I became a member. I was voted in. Then it was asked by Jim who would want to be president, and no one moved. No one said a word. No one did a thing. So as a concerned new charter member, I stood up and I said, "Well, then I wish to be president." No one does a thing, then all of a sudden, I stand up to be president. No one else stood up. Finally, Kathy Korlek had to elbow somebody to get them to put them up. I stood in front of all those people to say that I want to be part of this. I want to do something about this community. And yes, absolute policies need to be followed, and to some degree, they weren't. But so far, to even have this meeting, policies weren't followed. I don't wish to beat that down, because I know you guys are going through a lot, but at the end of the day, we've tried diligently to set this straight. We've tried to follow the bylaws that we had in place, and we had a special meeting that I was not a part of, and the entire meeting voted to keep the new council, or the new group in place. And we found out the Board of Trade, and yes, some things weren't followed, but then we decided to follow that. We've come here in good faith. We've spent hours reading over bylaws to understand what exactly going on here. All we're trying to do is build this community. We want to be part of something. That's why I joined. And now, to see all the stuff that's come up, it is discouraging, but I still feel that we have a great opportunity to move forward, and with this group, I think we've become a strong chamber, because we're the regional chamber. We're trying to drive business to Grand Forks from other areas. I have a big event that includes 200 people in Beavardale. I'm going to Beavardale at times, but I'm willing to do that for this community, because it'll drive people to that area. I've already talked to the radio. I have an opportunity to take the radio there, so we'll get exposure in Grand Forks. None of this was done before. I'm out there knocking on doors on the streets, trying to get this done, and all I get is infighting. All I'm asking, sir, is let's just move forward. We have an opportunity to really do some good things. Thank you.
I will let Counselor Thompson speak first, and I have a rebuttal on your statement, sir. Thank you. Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Dean. I think I said at the 15th meeting that this was nothing personal against anybody. But the fact remains, the bylaws that were filed were not followed, and you've admitted that, that's been admitted in your presentation. As a counselor, with a fiduciary responsibility to all of the taxpayers of this municipality, I cannot in all good conscience support funding an organization that doesn't follow its bylaws and constitution. What are you prepared to do to remedy this situation? Will you call another annual meeting in accordance with your bylaws? Will you ensure that people who are voting are eligible to vote? There's any number of things that need to be corrected. So I ask you, are you prepared to hold another AGM? So I ask you, are you prepared to hold another A G M and ensure that the chamber can remain a viable organization in this town? We don't have a funding agreement with the chamber at the moment, and I will not, at this point in time, support a funding agreement with the chamber until such time as the Board of Directors is forgiven in accordance with their bylaws.
If I may, before you respond, because I'd like to concur on that statement, and the main question here is, as Counselor Thompson has asked you, what are you prepared to do? By your own admission, you had stated that you did not follow the section 4.2, I believe it is, regarding the 90-day policy. So having said that, realistically, sitting here, if I may be very blunt and honest, you are actually not the president of the chamber at this point in time, because if you agree to the fact and admitted that you did not follow your bylaw, the election is not valid.
Absolutely. That's... Fair enough. You've quoted which one? 4.1?
4.2.
Okay, so you're just picking parts of the bylaws. If you continue to read to 4.35, section E, and A, it clearly states that if there's any discrepancies, that they would have a meeting, and that meeting would come to a final resolution. That would be legal and binding, which they did. I was not part of that meeting. The old, uh, old board got together, had a unanimous decision to maintain the new board. So, sir, I appreciate what you're saying, but you yourself aren't following your own bylaws. You say you want 4.1 to stand up, but you refuse, or 4.1, I'm sorry. 4.2 you want to stand, but you refuse to acknowledge 4.35, E, and, or A and E. So you can't just pick and choose pieces of paper on the bylaws. You have to take it all as it sits, and you're talking about following policies and bylaws. This meeting would not be taking place if you would have followed the policies and bylaws. We would have had a meeting with the C A O, and we would have resolved it then. At this point, yeah, we need to do, move forward. Do we need an election? According to what you've stated with the bylaws, we don't need a new election. Once that old board that you've acknowledged was, for a year, stood in front of you, and you accepted them, once they had that meeting, that became legal and binding, and it clearly states in the bylaws. So whichever bylaws you wish to take, we were going with those ones. You want to read those ones out and make it public knowledge, and absolutely, those are the bylaws. We did notice those discrepancies, so that the other board sat down and had a meeting, and they all voted unanimously to accept the new board. So you want to follow policies, let's follow policies. Follow the ones that we have in front of us. We've agreed that we're going to follow policies, absolutely, but we have to follow all of them. You want to go with 4.2, and yes, it is wrong, but 4.35, A and E also clears that up. We have done our due diligence. We've worked hard, and yeah, there are some discrepancies. They've been pointed out. I will gladly, gladly work with your C A O on a regular basis to ensure this never happens again, but to drag more people into more meetings, more elections, that we've agreed that we're going to follow policies. Well, for follow policies, we have to follow all of them, not just pieces of paper. We can't just start ripping pages and go, this one, and this one, and this one. So yes, 4.2 absolutely wasn't followed, but 4.35, A and E were followed, and it clearly states it's legal and binding once they have that meeting. So we're prepared to move forward. We're prepared to work with you. I feel strongly that I'll be a good candidate. I've known this area. I've worked hard. I've already got things lined up for this area, and to squash it now is only going to hurt our area economically. I'm here to move forward. I'm not causing any anger. I'm not upset. I understand where you guys are coming from, but you clearly stated you want to follow policies. So did you, and you guys are not following policies. You can't just pick certain papers out and go, we want to use these ones, but not these ones. So I ask you, just, if we're going to follow policies, follow all of them, please.
To that, then, you, what I'm hearing or perceiving to understand here is that you are laying the responsibility on previous board members that have approved the second emergency meeting or election. So then, in that case, it would be really, really relevant to have that board in front of us to explain how they could deviate and allow something like this to proceed.
Yeah, but they've already had that meeting, sir. Right? They already had that meeting. They had an in-house meeting, and they decided that they would move forward with the new chamber.
Counselor Ross.
Why are you bypassing, Counselor? You should have raised your hand up before all these people, and you keep bypassing them here.
Sir.
You're spoiling extreme bias of the general. You shouldn't be doing that.
Sir, you are out of order.
You are out of order.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, please. I will...
Who is this gentleman? Mr. Holland. Oh, okay.
Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I also wanted to point out a section of the chamber's bylaw that states each associate member shall appoint one authorized representative and may appoint one or more alternate representatives. That's section 3.3. This council hasn't had, as an associate member, we haven't had a representative on the board of the chamber for the last year, and for the last year, we've been in violation of section 3.3 of this bylaw. Again, both parties here have had some issues with following bylaws, and you know what? People make mistakes from time to time, and then they get together and they talk about it in civil ways, and they rectify them, which is what needs to happen here. I think it's unfortunate we haven't had a representative, and that's why Counselor Tripp and I attended that meeting, because we haven't been receiving feedback from the liaison. Counselor Hammett was removed from that board in June of 2016.
Excuse me, I wasn't removed. I voluntarily left.
You removed yourself from that board?
Yeah, I would say I was removed. I wasn't removed. I voluntarily left.
So the city should have put another representative in place at that point. For a year, we've been out without representation, and therefore, without any clear information coming to us as to what's going on. That's why we get into these communication problems.
It's a lot of communication.
I also wanted to ask, Mr. Mayor, you're referring, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I still have the floor.
Counselor Thompson, I have to ask you a question.
You're referring to the bylaws here that were filed on June, sorry, January the 1st of 2011. This chamber has been in place for five years, so I'm wondering if these are the bylaws from the old chamber, which was just the Grand Forks Chamber of Commerce? Because in 2011, I'm not sure if this Chamber of Commerce existed.
Yeah, we were to prevent Industry Canada until April 2012.
So these are not your bylaws. These came from a previous chamber that has been dissolved. It was only the Grand Forks Chamber. It was not the Boundary Chamber of Commerce. These bylaws do not apply to them.
Yeah.
Counselor Thompson, I only have one statement to make here, and I'd like to ask you this question, seeing this all of a sudden sincere interest in the chamber, yourself and Counselor Tripp. You have affiliation with Mr. Engen.
You cannot attack me personally.
I'm not discussing your personal life.
You just attacked my personal life.
I am asking a question, because under the Charter, there's a conflict.
Way out of order.
So this is why, it's a question. I'm not, I'm not interested in your personal life. I'm asking, is there any sort of affiliation? I was not specific. I asked a simple...
I'm affiliated with everyone in this room.
You asked it.
None of your business is possibly...
Counselor Thompson, I'm still asking you that question, because it goes under section, goes under section 102, A and B of the Charter. And I don't want any personal details. I just need a yes or a no, if there's an affiliation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Counselor, Mr. Engen and myself have sat on the rep commission together for the past two and a half years, and I've also known him through soccer in the past, but really, this is, is completely irrelevant. There is no conflict of interest in a small town when you know people and have associations with them.
Thank you. Counselor Ross.
Mayor Conrad, I've had my hand up.
Counselor Ross has had a question before you, Counselor Tripp.
Sorry, Counselor.
No, that's, go ahead, yeah, please do.
Go ahead, Counselor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to acknowledge the job that Ellen Cooper had done previously, and the extenuating circumstances, circumstances which led him to lead the chamber. And the way I'm looking at it, and I've been reading this since I was able to catch up, and not knowing that the D B A was coming forward and their association with the, with the, um, the chamber, that it is extenuating circumstances, and the transition has been awkward. And the way I look at it is, it's our job, it's incumbent upon us as a council to work through these awkward transitions, and they're not difficult. It's just a matter, and I believe the sincerity of Mr. Engen and Kathy and the people that are involved, and taking personalities, I don't like to hear names mentioned. I don't like to hear about people throwing other people under the bus. There's always backstory, and I don't really even want to hear personal things, but I do want the council to work to transition this new chamber, and the way that the election happened, and seeing that this special meeting happened, and Ellen Cooper was in attendance, and I see who was in attendance, and that motion was carried. It would be my wish, as a city councillor, that we now move forward with the new board and the new chamber, and to build a strong chamber, and to support the work that you're doing. And it sounds like you've got some really exciting ideas. It's good to have new energy in there, so I would like to move forward with the new chamber, and learn from our mistakes and do a better job, and thank you for putting me in.
Counselor Tripp.
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. I absolutely concur with Counselor Ross, and I've been asked by more than one person, including yourself, on this council, why would I be interested in the Chamber of Commerce? I, I find that question absolutely just amazing. We, as council members, should certainly be interested in the organizations in our community that are seeking to grow it, to develop it, to make it a vital place for us to do business. We've got a sign at the end of town that says, "Open for Business." If we are disparaging the very organization that is seeking to promote this community, what are we doing? My interest in the Chamber of Commerce is exactly as it should be as a member of council. I ran on these, on some issues that I wanted to see happen in terms of agritourism, some other things that I think would be really helpful for this community, and so I just, I think this is a question that we all need to be asking ourselves, and I really appreciate Counselor Ross's comments. I believe we should move forward. We should support this organization with everything that we have, whether that be attending meetings and finding out what they, they need, providing ideas for them, helping them network with people who can help grow businesses in this community, and I'm all in favor of that.
Counselor Hammett, you had your hand up.
Oh, there was just some issue with regards to how long the bylaws have been in effect, and if they had been followed in the past, and I just wanted to note that the previous, the executive director for the chambers here, he might like to comment on the bylaws and how they were followed.
Unfortunately, not at this particular coming town. Counselor Hammett, just need to add that as a support, Counselor.
Yeah, we did. We already did.
We did? Would you like to comment on that, sir?
Well, I, I, you know, James Wilson, I used to be the executive director for Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. My recollection, you know, I heard some things that are not quite the way I remember it in past meetings. Although I echo Counselor Ross's talk, the Boundary Country Chamber is, is here to support the businesses and the, the community, and I really would hate to see this kind of internal fighting lose that. And I put a lot of work and passion into myself, as Kathy shows from hers, that we want to make this work. Yeah, the bylaw thing, I, I do remember filing those bylaws, and, and I, and I have some files. I should go back and look to see if I can find it, because I do recall it, but regardless of all that, I think we should try to work this out. I, I'm happy to be here. I want to support, but I, I don't know. I just struggle with this he-said, she-said kind of stuff. I think it's, I, I'd rather just, let's, I'll answer questions directly, but I do not want to come out on people and pass stuff, so.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you to Kathy and Dean. I have a question. How many members are you, do you have in the chamber?
About 120.
And of that 120, how many are businesses in Grand Forks?
Oh, probably 80% of them, and I don't have the figures on top of my head, but yeah, the majority is definitely in Grand Forks. And not just the downtown of Grand Forks, but all of Grand Forks.
But then the boundaries of this, of the city. I'm not including Area D or City Lake.
Yeah.
Okay. When could you actually get me those numbers?
Um, tomorrow. Yeah, I can email them to you if you'd like.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If we're done soon enough, I can have them to you today.
Just a question on parliamentary procedure, through you to our C A O. I'm curious, because I see that there's going to be a split vote here, and I'm wondering if, according to the Charter, if the chair only votes to break a tie, or if the chair can vote to make a tie?
The chair can vote, and he has the right to vote either affirmative or negative.
Can you refer to what section you're voting, please?
I don't have the community charter in front of me. Counselor, that's...
Mayor voting.
So we're not following Robert rules of order?
This is the community charter, and it trumps Robert rules.
So I'm just wondering what part of the community charter that's founded?
We can have a rule that we hold our meetings. I know, I agree, because I wonder why the mayor always votes. People vote for or against.
Yes.
That's just, it's, it's for show.
I mean, we've done a lot of things all along that don't follow the...
It's in the trigger.
That's Robert's rules.
My name is Joan Thomas, and I am the Chair of the Board of Community Futures. Community Futures started the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce when the Grand Forks Chamber folded. A lot of people put a lot of time and effort into it. Community Futures is here to help the region in grow economic status and attract people to the region, and a lot of volunteers. I'm a volunteer. I have a day job. I actually have to go back, but I am a volunteer. I'm involved in many things in the community, and I concur with what James says and Colleen says. I don't like to see the infighting. I, you know, if something did go wrong, we need to make it right, but we need a strong voice for this region. We have a lot of challenges against other regions. We have challenges to bring funding to these areas, to attract businesses, to keep businesses. Those businesses bring families, they bring children, they keep our school, they keep our hospitals. I'm very passionate about economic development and strengthening our communities, and as the Chair of Community Futures, I just want to say, we put a lot of work into it over many years. We've transitioned our funding, because we're not a long-term funder of it, but we were able to get it going throughout the region, develop a memorandum of understanding, excuse me, with the Board of Trade in Greenwood. Lots happened. It's a great region. We need to work together, but I'm sorry, I'm not going to be here for the vote, but I actually have to go back, because somebody actually pays me to do a job, not just my volunteer work. So I just want to say, I think you needed to hear from Community Futures, and as the board of that, or as the Chair of that organization, I just wanted to let you know what we thought, and we don't want to get into he said, she said. We support a regional chamber, and it's important that we have that strength across all of our communities, and we work together. With that, I need to leave. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. I think everyone in this room recognizes the value of the regional chamber of commerce, and no one wants to see it whole. All I have to do is that another annual meeting is another election of those who need the requirements of membership, both to vote and to seek. And no aspersions to you, Dean, but you did say you joined that night, and you stood up and you volunteered to be president, and I, I would suggest that with the issues that are currently causing me, as a counselor, concern in my ability to support financially the Regional Chamber of Commerce, that another meeting be held, and that the bylaws be followed, and that, I would think, depending on when it's, when it's held, would exclude you from putting your name forward again, if that would resolve the issue.
Can I just make a comment to that? I think what we're forgetting here is the chamber was born April 4th, 2012, and the bylaws you're referring to were the Grand Forks Chamber's bylaws. They're not ours, and that we, we have only, we've never filed, so until they're filed and approved by Industry Canada, they're not our bylaws. We've got to follow the Board of Trades, and...
The bylaws are the Boundary Regional Chamber.
But they've never been filed.
Those are the ones that are, I think, interim C A O, we see from Chris. Those are the ones that are, I think, interim CAO received from Chris.
So what you're saying then, you want to follow those bylaws. So according to 435, Section 80, we have resolved that. So we should be moving forward at this point because under your own admission, you want us to follow these bylaws. The old board had a meeting, decided the new board would stay in place. So what you're saying is a new point. You, you've already established that you want to follow...
I would challenge that decision. And I will challenge that decision if I have to. It can be, we wanted an amicable resolution. That was councillor Bobby's amendment to the resolution on Monday, on the 15th. And for me, that would be one way and the only way to reach an amicable solution, an amicable solution. We do not have a funding agreement with the chamber at the moment. So I can't support funding any organization that hasn't got, in my, my point of view, a legitimate board of directors. No aspersions to you or anybody else on the board. I think it was all in, in good faith and thinking you were doing the right thing and being helpful. However, I respectfully request again that you hold another AGM, that you encourage as many of your members to come out to that AGM, to have another election for your Board of Directors. And then we can move forward.
Before councillor Tripp, I would just like to weigh in on this matter that councillor Thompson has mentioned. Yes, that would be a good resolve. I mean, realistically, I would feel it shouldn't even be in effect retroactively the 90 days, but I'll let that one slide if you run again. Because realistically, if you did not follow those bylaws, you cannot even now say if you hold another election in, let's say, the end of June, that you've completed your mandate of 90 days. Because realistically, the first election, as councillor Thompson has mentioned, is not really legitimate election. Now, having said that, you quote Section 4.35 of your bylaws. Again, may I come back full circle then to state, then it would be up to the former board to come in front of council, be it in camera if necessary. But for them to explain, because you are putting the onus now on former board members that passed under Section 4.35, that they considered the election official and that you were to move forward. Am I correct so far?
Yes.
Okay. So in that case, if you are not willing to take the, let's say, the mitigation or the, you know, the alignment that we're prepared to offer, then it would be up to the board to answer to the call of the fact that Dave, under Section 4.35, allowed this to move forward. Because again, there's only one reason why I'm saying this, as I've mentioned before. This is a case of precedent. Because if we allow this, we are funding many more organizations. And if something similar should happen, then there we go again with the constituents' tax dollars, that they will say, well, you let it go with the chamber. And this council will not put themselves in that kind of predicament where then it comes down to a precedent matter. That is the only reasoning behind this. These bylaws are in place and you say there's one that trumps them. 4.35, am I correct? Well, then, that would have to be then answered because obviously you cannot answer that. I would like to know and councillor would like to know what the logic and the reasoning was.
That board did have the meeting and did follow the bylaws. And they said that they want to keep the new board. And he says that's, once that decision's been made by the board, it's legal and binding. So they can't go back.
So then you're telling me that the previous board also did not honor or respect the constitution and bylaws that were in place? Is that what you're saying?
I'm not saying that. You just said it.
Yeah, because that's exactly what you stated.
You're only picking up some of, you're only picking up some of those bylaws. You're, you're running with 4.2, but you forget there are other, other bylaws to that. And you refuse to acknowledge them.
No, I know, Mr. Ingham, but the point is, the point is, these 90 days, as councillor Ross has stated in the previous meetings, the 90-day and the 30-day rule is in place for every board that is, in most boards' cases, for one reason. So there, and I'm not saying that this is the case in this particular issue, because that needs to be dissuaded or possibly have any form of takeover. This is a small town. I agree. And this is a very small issue. But the fact is, facts are facts.
And you're not acknowledging it.
But you don't fact, sir. Councillor Thompson, then councillor Tripp, or councillor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Conrad. Just, I just, I don't know if this is going to be helpful for you, but just to remind us that we do have fee-for-service contracts in place with each of the organizations that we do provide funding for. Our CAO has pointed out that the council does not have a fee-for-service agreement expedited yet for 2017 for the chamber and that it would be possible to put in wording that would ensure that the chamber complies and operates within the rules and regulations as governing by, in their governing legislation and the Board of Trade Act. So we certainly do have the ability to make sure that the organizations that we're funding from now on, every time we do a fee-for-service agreement, we can put this language in there. And I think that was very helpful that she pointed that out here. So we're not without any kind of a remedy. And I believe that, you know, we're ready to put this in place for the 2017 fee-for-service agreement. Let them go with what they've got. They're excited, they're capable, they're, look at what they're willing to put up with. And I just say, let's do this. Let's put this in and move forward.
So just a quick comment, councillor Tripp. So what you're asking council to do is do one of these and let's just move forward and fix it later. But that's the perception that could be out there.
Absolutely.
By our, Section 4.35 of the board refers to policies, not bylaws. My concern is that the bylaw wasn't following. Policies are in addition over and, in addition to the bylaw.
But it states, if you're reasonable, it states, is there any discrepancies in any...
Policies.
Any discrepancies?
Policies.
435.
Of your bylaws?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible to speak? My name's Ted Invictus, a citizen of, that really of no import, but, um, thank you. So as you muddle around the issue, me being who I am, go, suggestion to meet your needs that they behave legally and respond to the fiduciary requirements of taking money from the taxpayers, they've got to get the paperwork once. Right. No question about that. Before you could, because I would come and hound you as a councillor if I knew you gave money with someone who didn't have the paperwork. Right. Totally cool. So why can't y'all, everybody, look at the, okay, so we have this challenge here. They have some paperwork that's not failed, filed correctly. Having done tons of societies, I'd do that in about half an hour. And it's registered, I get the documents back, they can come back and you can give them two weeks, say, come back in two weeks and say, here's the document as registered by the appropriate legal authority that gives us status as a legal entity, meeting the laws and the requirements so that the councillors who vote on spending our money know that they are doing their fiduciary responsibility and due diligence to the nth degree. Yay, great for that. So if we gave them two weeks to get their paperwork in order, does that still meet the needs of the current fiscal year? I'm not sure where you guys are on the approvals and all that stuff. But would it not allow them to go forward as an entity? I see what you're saying when you say, well, we're not pushing it back there. We're just going to put it here until you come back and prove to us you have legal documentation. That should not take forever. And then they can be funded, our economy can grow, the council is aware that they have done their fiduciary responsibilities and read the citizens. I can go have dirt on my fingers instead of being here. Yes, sorry, I'm not in charge. That's my suggestion to you all.
Just to be clear, we have filed with Industry Canada. We are a legal entity. What has not been filed is our bylaws.
That's what I'm saying. Get to it.
The council keeps referring to is bylaws that were filed in January 2011. The chamber was born April 4th, 2012. So you're referring to bylaws that aren't ours. Ours have never been filed. So according to Industry Canada, if you haven't had filed approved bylaws, we are to file, follow the Board of Trades bylaws, which we did follow, but we still need to update them to fit us a little bit better. So I just want to be clear that the bylaws you're referring to, we weren't even born at that time. That was 2011. We were born April 4th, 2012. So there's some confusion still about bylaws. BCRCC has never filed them. We, and talking to Industry Canada, he said unless you filed and they're approved by us, they're not your bylaws. So the only bylaws we have right now are the Board of Trades bylaws.
So are you suggesting that the city is funding an organization that...
Wait, I've been suggesting that for the past four years that you've been funding the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. You've been funding with the Board of Trade bylaws. Those are only bylaws filed, which are legal bylaws. Jim Harris sits with the Greenwood Board of Trade. He's really good with the bylaws and he's been on our bylaw committee. And he's the one that asked me to check with Industry Canada just to make sure we're on the right bylaws because we didn't want to get into another mess of finding we're not following the right bylaws. And with that, we found out no bylaws have ever been filed for the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce.
I'd like to address it to the gentleman in the back.
James, again, ex-director for EB of Chamber. Former. I think we're, there's a clarification here. I think when I'm hearing and I'm recalling in my memory, we actually were under the umbrella of the BC Chamber of Commerce and therefore it gave us, we didn't have to go to the federal. We actually filed under the Societies Act of BC through the Board of Directors. And we actually are a not-for-profit agency, so we didn't actually need to go to the Board of Trade Act. We were not a part of that ever.
And we not filed with the products?
So, so when, back when I was doing, we would put the directors' names in, we would put any bylaw amendments and we'd send to the BC Societies Act and they would approve it there. And then whatever, we were covered federally by the BC Chamber umbrella that we were under. And I'm assuming we're still under that umbrella.
That's to register them.
Yeah, to register and all that stuff. But we don't need to go to the Board of Trade Act, is what I, my comment. So maybe a paperwork. We just have to do a little more research and, and dig into this a little deeper and we'd probably find the answer. It's just, it's there.
Thank you. Just for everybody's information, because it seems to be the effect here that council is going after the present chamber or board members. The whole element here that has occurred, even at the committee of the whole, was not because of this specific focus on these two bylaws. It was because it was brought to council's attention by members of your own board and also by your subcommittee. So that would lead very suspiciously there. In fact, you've admitted yourself, that was the BBC.
The subcommittee violated numerous policies to get in front of you. So if you don't follow policies, that should have been followed properly. And it wasn't followed. They should have come to us first and this media circus wouldn't occur right now. We should have been in front of your CAO and we should have had this resolved. So now what we've done, and I will clarify for you, when it clearly states here, 434, "The government of the chamber, the director of affairs, and the control of its property shall be vested in the board." Number 435, "The board has full power and authority to do all things necessary to accomplish the objectives of the chamber, which fall within the law and which are authorized through these bylaws." Number E states, "Shall in case of any ambiguity or doubt in your interpretation of these bylaws and policies of the chamber, resolve the ambiguity or doubt and their decision will be final and binding." Sorry, I'm excited.
You're referring to the bylaws that don't exist?
Take it down or not, Mr. Ingham.
That's what I keep saying.
I believe our CAO has a comment and she's been sidetracked.
Can you turn off the mic? Absolutely. Sorry about that.
Jager Worship, just for some clarification, when I did the search for the federal corporation, there's a corporation number that is under the Corporate and Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. And when I did the search on that, it did show up as the bylaw. And the bylaw actually reads Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce bylaws of the Constitution. It states right in the bylaw, that's the title. I don't know if they would have made you done the bylaw before they were accepted, but it does show that's what it's named, the bylaw. And just for one clarification, in the community charter under 123.5, if the voters of members present at council meeting at the time of the vote are equal, for or against, the motion is defeated. So it's made in the charter when you have a title and it's defeated.
Yeah, it wasn't my question. That was, can the chair vote to create a type? Sort of. Because...
Find me the article that says I can. Because I'm still a council member first and foremost. I'm still a member of the council. That is under the charter. I can always vote and I can also decisively...
Hey, I wasn't challenging it. I just wanted to know.
Just, exactly. And I'm not challenging you there, I'm just mentioning it under the charter. It states quite clearly. Councillor Thompson?
Well, as former councillor Chery, Chersonoff would say, we've been orbiting around and around and around for the better part of an hour. We're getting arguments about, and quoting bylaws that I'm not sure that you want to follow, that you want to file, that aren't filed, that weren't followed. It's very confusing. My request still stands that the only way I can support this organization is that another annual meeting we call in accordance with the bylaws that may or may not exist, but you're quoting. And, and then we take over the funding agreement. After that, I will not and cannot support funding an organization that may or may not have followed its bylaws. If they don't have bylaws in the constitution registered, why not? To have we and other councils funded an organization that wasn't legitimate? I admit a fiduciary responsibility, not just to the chamber and its members, but to every taxpayer in this community.
Don't speak for me.
Or me.
And that's fine. I represent you. I represent you whether you agree with my decisions or not. I, I make a decision what I believe is in the best interest of the community as a whole. And so I'm asking for the last time, will you consider holding another annual meeting, have an election of officers, and then come back to council and we can move forward because it's not going to be an amicable decision on my part if we don't, and I will not support it.
Councillor Hammond and councillor Pepper.
Yes, I concur with councillor Thompson. I have attended every AGM for the chamber since 2004. I'm, I'm very concerned about economic development, business recruitment and retention in the area. That's why I chose to run for council. But I'm reading the bylaws here as presented and they do say in 4.35, "The board is expressly empowered to make, alter, amend, and repeal such policies, rules, and regulations as directors determine." But also on Section D, it said, "They shall enforce the provisions of these bylaws." Now you state that you're following the Board of Trades bylaws because the regional chamber doesn't have bylaws. But on line G, 4.35G, it says, "Subject to the act, the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce made from time to time." So these bylaws were written for the Regional Chamber of Commerce. These were not for the old chamber. They stay right in the bylaws that they were for the Regional Chamber of Commerce. So I don't want to see the chamber become defunct. I know how hard it took... I know how hard it took Community Futures and James to get this going. They've spent months and months and months going from one end of the area to the other to try and get people on board and to get memberships and recruit and get a united region. And I really believe that there's strength. If one community does well, we all do well. So the best thing is to work together. But I have concerns that there were bylaws in place. The bylaws were not followed during their A.G.M. There wasn't a quorum to even hold an A.G.M. And members were voting after buying memberships from the floor. So the bylaws that are in place at the moment are for the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce. They weren't abided by. And I believe that it makes that A.G.M. null and void. And the easiest thing to do would be for the Board. And it would have stopped this from even getting this far if they had started at their special meeting to have another meeting. I think, I was there. I think that, and I'm not a member, so you can't count me. But you have to have, I think, 15 members in good standing to even have an A.G.M. And you didn't have that many people there in good standing. It should have been, there should have been another A.G.M. held immediately within a matter of weeks of that first one. And it would have stopped any of it from getting this far.
Is that right?
I'd like to respond to that. Actually, when you chaired our A.G.M. in 2016, Chris, we didn't follow that bylaw either because we didn't have that quorum. And again, we're talking about bylaws that don't exist. They may have the Chamber's name typed into them, but they were never registered. So they don't count. And I don't know how many more times I can say that. We don't have registered bylaws. Like, we just don't.
Counselor Ross and Counselor Pepper.
I'm sorry, I was on your list before.
Colleen was first.
I went after Hammett. And then it was supposed to be me, but I let the executive director.
I think Counselor Hammett just wants to rebuttal that statement. And then, but make it short.
First one, please. Sorry. Yes, in 2016, I was asked to do the nomination committee, which meant that I wrote names on a whiteboard and I collected the ballots from the room. I wasn't selling memberships. But to go back to your bylaws, this is what was presented to us that was received by our C.A.O. that is registered. These are the registered bylaws.
They're not.
Well, we have to go back to the C.A.O. and find out which ones weren't. But you have bylaws that you've sent out to your Board members.
Because we thought they were our bylaws. And phoning Industry Canada, we found out they are not our bylaws. You have to remember, I inherited a lot of this.
But if you thought they were your bylaws, what you just said, if you thought they were your bylaws.
I did.
Then you didn't follow them.
And neither did we in 2016.
That's not the point here.
Was not appointed. You volunteered. And it's in our minutes to sit as the Chair of our A.G.M. committee.
Nominations committee.
No.
By saying a statement that they weren't followed then, you're dropping a lot of people into that really dark area.
They weren't followed the year before. They weren't followed the year before that either. And I can't say the year before they weren't when James was because we don't have any minutes. None of them were kept. So we actually can't go back and find out what took place at that A.G.M. because there is no minutes. And when I asked James about that, he told me he could pull them out of his head if he wanted to.
Counselor Ross. Oh, Counselor Ross and Counselor Pepper.
Well, yeah, just another quick one. I mean, these bylaws also say in Section 34, it states they're associate membership and then Nelson and District Chamber of Commerce. So are these bylaws from Nelson as well? Or it's... I don't know. They say they're Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce. They also say they're Nelson Chamber of Commerce. So who knows? The other question, you know, if we want to have another meeting, you're not recognizing this Board. And the executive director is leaving in two days. So who's supposed to run that meeting? The previous Board, Mr. Cooper is already off on personal issues. He can't be present. As the past president, he should run the meeting. So you're left with the quandary of who's to run that meeting.
That's not realistically an issue that the council has to look at. That's not. We're not delving into the business of the Chamber. We are just focusing on the fact because of what's occurred, we are funding an organization. How you handle your business, that's your problem and your business to do so properly. But it has to be done according to your own bylaws. And as we've concurred, as your own Board members have stated, by sending the red flag up, that this was not done. That's the bottom line. This is what we're here for.
Right. And then we tried to resolve it. And they had that meeting, an in-camera meeting where they all voted unanimously to keep this Board. So you say you're not trying to delve into our personal business. And yet you are. You're trying to tell us that we have to have another meeting.
Not realistically, can you be...
I've been told I'm supposed to have a... Twice, I'm supposed to have another A.G.M. So you are telling me I'm supposed to...
Are you...
No, I'm not telling you any.
Yeah, you two are telling me.
I'm suggesting. It's not telling. There's a big difference in the two wordings. Suggesting because of the fact, you are putting again, I don't know how many times I'm going to go over this again. You are telling me that the previous Board had a special meeting and approved what occurred. Well, then, if you are putting the onus on the previous Board, then we'd have to talk to the previous Board.
Yeah, but the moment it had that meeting, it became legal and binding. So it moves forward. You can't just take...
Bylaws exist or not. You can have a date place.
Counselor Ross.
Not us.
Pull it out from underneath. You're not... There we go. Okay, I have a question and a little comment. So to you, Mr. Rich, our C.A., our active C.A.O., I know you've already said it once, but where did you get that copy of those bylaws?
Where's he?
Your worship, I got it from the corporate registry of the federal government.
That's right. Okay. Okay, so they were filed at some time in order for that registry to have them.
Yes, your worship. When I went and I did the registry, I emailed them. And they went in and they checked. And they told me right on the phone that they had them there. And I have them in my hands in that state.
Did they send them? So bylaws have been filed according to our C.A.O.
In 2011.
Not for this Chamber.
Not for ours.
That's not us. See, if it's 2011, that's not us.
But that's what we've been working with. But the funding.
It's the grand...
Then it was up to your onus to bring up if there's something new in fact that you haven't had.
But I didn't know. I mean, again, I knew. And when our bylaws were...
Then I just want to suggest something you didn't know you said, right? If you go in front of anything that's legal or justice, you know what the answer is going to be?
I was handed the bylaws when I started. And I guess I should have phoned Industry Canada to make sure they were correct as to what you're telling me.
Unfortunately, legality-wise ignorance of the law. Excuse me. The judge will read you that.
If we want to talk about legal, that bylaws are not up to the executive director. It's up to the Board to follow.
I'm not, like I said earlier, I'm not directing this at you. Always remember, I'm directing this only at the total Chamber, not at yourself, Ms. Ross.
Okay, I'm sorry. And I would also like to say, you know, I'm not cutting down James, Community Futures, or anything else. I think they did a fabulous job for us, James included. He got Board of Trade and that. All I'm saying is what we've been left with and what knowledge we have. I would like to see everybody put personalities aside for the better of our community and move forward and work together, not against each other. And it just seems that...
Counselor Ross, our public speaker.
Okay, so was there something else you wanted to add? And then, I'm just going to...
Your worship, just that the form that I filled out, it shows the corporation number and the corporate name is Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. Status is active. Government legislation is 43222. 2012 will follow it too. And this is the bylaw that was attached.
2012.
April 4, 2012. 2012, 12, 12.
Okay.
Okay, Counselor Ross.
Okay, I'm just finishing here. Okay, so... Because it's from Nelson's.
Speak aloud.
Okay. Okay, so it doesn't say that this resolution was passed unanimously. So it just says it was carried. It doesn't say that it was passed unanimously. So I'm not sure where you're getting that. But regardless, it happened in camera. And then there was a motion that the minutes will be released to the public. So this became public as of March 14th minute. This became public. And this became the old Board's endorsement of your 2017 A.G.M. and an endorsement of the election that happened in good faith, acknowledging that bylaws were not followed. And I don't know, was there a quorum? Wasn't there a quorum? I heard there were 15 people. There was no quorum? Okay, so to me, that's an indication of volunteer burnout. You have 120 members who aren't even coming to the Chamber A.G.M. So now we're asking you to do another A.G.M. And you have a volunteer president, a volunteer Board, people who are trying to run their own businesses, trying to do really good things for this community. And you're asking them to give notice and have another A.G.M. and have another election and tire people out. It's like chasing wounded deer through really deep snow. And I don't like it. What's happened is this release of in-camera information, Alan Cooper was there, Kathy Korlech, there's names here. These people who are reputable people in our community have passed this resolution. They've given it out here. They've endorsed this Board. I said it once, I'm saying it again. We're circumnavigating the globe here today. Can we just support the new Board and move forward? Can you raise your hand here and give me for change and just do something positive and say, okay, let's just, let's move on. As of today, please, let's move on. And I'm really appealing to my fellow counselors. This is an endorsement right here. So let's just take it in good faith. These are reputable people in our community. I respect them. I don't want, you don't need a trade before council and have them explain anything. They've explained everything in this motion here. So I'd like to move on.
And everyone was in favor of that motion.
It was unanimous?
Yes.
It was unanimous.
I was there.
Okay.
Your worship, I see Kathy Korlech is in the gallery. And I wonder if you could invite her to come and speak to patients that we are going around and around and around with.
But she was at the in-camera meeting. I was. And in-camera doesn't seem to matter now, one way or the other. I spoke against it because I felt that the rules weren't followed. We didn't follow our bylaws. And it was quite, it was a huge discussion. And I was the only one that stepped up and said that. And then I looked around and I thought, okay, who's going to be at our next Board of Directors? And seeing the lack of participation on our own Board at that point, I felt that there was an opportunity. And that with the people that had stepped up for the new Board, even though we didn't follow any rules, we did not. We broke every rule in the book. We had no quorum. We had people sold memberships on the floor. They needed 30 days and 90 days before you could run for office.
Unpaid.
Oh, yeah. And my E.D., since she's thrown my name several times out here, she did the best that she was capable of doing for this thing. she did the best that she was capable of doing for this thing. And that, in that case too, I had my check sitting at my store for some time. Nobody picked it up, so then I was not in good standing. However, just wait Kathy. And so that was sitting there and all this stuff was going on and so I said, okay, fine. We have no hope here, we have to move forward with something. So let's just take what we've got. We had some young enthusiastic people on there and I thought, well, why not? We're not getting anywhere as it is, so let's just go forward. Even though we did not follow our rules, we did not follow the bylaws at all. We had no quorum, we should not have gone forward. And I also confess that my ignorance of that is no, that doesn't make it right. And I was not familiar with the bylaws as I am now, but at that point, I was not. So it was my own ignorance that did not do anything right and I confess to that. Because why not? It's there. But seeing the people that were on that board and I thought, okay, we have a chance. So that's the only reason. And I was not in favor of it, but I let it go. Because what else was I going to do? I was going to be outvoted anyways, didn't matter.
Who is on the board? I don't even know Dean and yourself.
That's, well, and that's, that's it. And Jim?
And Jason was here.
And Jason's here. Jeff Fierl from the...
Jason Mataro. Oh, okay.
Yeah, Jeff from the Credit Union, Fierl. Shane...
Aaron's.
Aaron's. Kathy Korlech, Stephanie Bolz, Jason, Jim, Lisa Smith. So we're missing one board person at this point.
So you've got all your bases covered with, with like zones and all of that?
Yes.
Yes, you do.
I think the biggest problem before we go forward is the fact that up until this point, till our AGM, we very seldom, we didn't often have a quorum. And that was because of, and I'm going to say the scattering of all our people, which were necessary because we are a regional chamber. But at that point, you were saying just that calling that, it's hard to do things and no matter what it is or where we are in this whole place, most people are doing this because they want to make it right and do something for a community. That's why I joined. And when I joined, and we were talking about that earlier, I had to apply for the job basically. And it had to go before the board and whether it was going to be approved or not. And fortunately for me, I was. Because I really believe in our community and our regional prospects. We can do a lot. It's just some of the things have fallen down. And that's exactly what has happened. And whether we go forward and the best legal thing, of course, is to have a new AGM. But if that's not what's going on, it's just, you know. And then that's the whole thing. There's only a few positions that are two years. The president is one year only and that's it. So, yeah.
The second row.
Well, and after me, I'd like the Gazette to go because she's had her end up over and over again.
Your name, Laura?
I'm Laura Savinter. A citizen of this wonderful little town of heart we have that has become very divided over the last few years. But I heard you say that the Chamber was a B.C.-registered society? Is it still in good standing as a B.C.-registered society?
Yes.
Then you have an obligation by the 2018 November to redo, to comply with the new B.C. Societies Act. I would take that as a great opportunity to rectify all of this. You have to have, you can do your, go through your bylaws and your, whether you, they're yours or not, the ones that exist, that are the registered ones, and have them comply with the B.C. Societies Act. Right? To do that, to approve those, you need an AGM to approve those as well. You cannot do that on your own as a board. Right?
Correct.
So Christine's suggestion of an AGM is going to be necessary anyway. The sooner you get those bylaws done and registered with the B.C. Societies Act, the easier it's going to be for you and everybody else. So why not take this opportunity to do exactly that? And say within a month, have all that done, have your AGM done.
We're about to lose her as an employee in three days. Can you tell me who's going to do all the work for free? I've done enough work for free.
I do a lot of work for free too.
To have someone put it together. You're trying to say we don't have an AGM?
But you're going to have to do that anyway soon.
But who's going to do it between now and then? There's nobody, she's leaving in three days.
Well, you have 150 members, why is it such a problem?
We can't even get a quorum now. We can't even get them both here. You've got to understand, when I became president, I stood up. I was the one that stood up. Then Kathy decided to stand up.
I'm not challenging you, I'm not challenging you any of that.
We're struggling to get members now.
I know what it is like to struggle with a society. I'm saying that you're going to have to do it one way or another.
We take quorum for all our board meetings.
All our board meetings, I've attended, we've had four, we're all quorum.
Yeah, we don't pull meetings without...
But in the past, and this is reflecting of what we've been saying all along, I know that year time, I go, we're about to lose here on the 30th. So there'll be no employees. So who's going to put this board?
With all due respect, I'm going to have the same statement.
Who's going to put them together?
You'll have to make that happen.
That is up to you as a society to do that.
Well, as president, yes, but then...
If you're telling me now that you're dysfunctional because you're losing your executive director, then you expect this council to...
You're saying dysfunctional to the point that nobody can do the work because you're losing your executive director? Yes, because she's quitting because she has to rush her.
I'm moving on.
So here I am standing trying to move this forward.
We have 17 grade applicants and someone part-time in the office while I'm gone. Our office is not abandoned. We have someone manning the phones and the emails even when I'm out. We have a hiring committee that's going to hire a grade ED, so please don't make it sound like we're abandoning our office because we're not.
There you go. And gentleman in the back?
Oh, I want to put my name forward. Can I?
Because that is...
Can I help?
Yay!
I can help. I would love to. If I can step in as an intern until you find a new ED, I can probably pick up some slack, at least do some research because I have some backing, I have my old files. I can step up if you want. I don't need to, you know, we can pause. Labor policies figured out, but I just want to put my name out there. You guys let me know and we'll talk.
Yes, Your Worship, through you to the interim CAO. Thank you. So just to reiterate one more time, they were filed, these bylaws were filed under this name, Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. Is that correct? Okay, so then I'm hoping that you can shed some light on my next question, which is, these bylaws seem to have been filed before the Chamber was in existence. Is it because bylaws need to be filed before a chamber can come into existence? Like, I'm wondering about this gap here.
Your Worship, I'm not sure on what the Societies Act dictates it out would be in my purveyance. I don't know how they do that. Am I be able to help you with that? You have made some reference that in the bylaws, it talks about Nelson. And I can tell you why, it's because the chair prior to Alan Cooper was Chuck Bennett. He was the chair of the Chamber of Commerce in Nelson. He was also the chair when James was the executive director. And when the regional chamber formed, they borrowed those bylaws from Nelson. They changed the wording inside the bylaws to reflect the Boundary Country Regional Chamber, but they must have left the Nelson name in there at some point. But they were definitely filed after the regional chamber was formed and that's how they're in there. And they're registered with the Societies.
Thank you.
2011, 2012.
April 2012 is when we were formed as the Regional Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, April 12, 2012.
So that's, those are the bylaws that you have with that date?
No, it was the 11th.
It says on the bottom of the document.
Worship, it shows that the corporation was created on April 12, 2012. On the bylaw that's in here, and I think, and I don't know why they would have it as that, but it says 2011 at the bottom of the bylaw. And so it says, "Bylaws approved by resolution of the Board January 11, 2011", which caused me to question possibly the fact that maybe they had this bylaw put in place before the regional chamber came in. It's typo because it says in the bylaw, Regional, Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce. But I think they forgot to change it later.
I think some of that is that you can register and then as a society, but when you have your first incorporation meeting, it's going to be different. You've registered. That could be the discrepancy. Registering and having meetings, all of them are different things.
Any more discussion? Counselor Hammond?
Aside from the AGM and not following of the bylaws, just looking at the whole, and like I said before, I don't want to see the collapse of the Chamber. I think the regional chamber is entitled to our community, all of our communities, bringing us all together. But I have serious concerns when I hear the board saying they can't get a quorum to come to their meetings. If there's such a disconnect between the business community and the Chamber that they cannot get a quorum to come to their meetings, to their AGMs, or to their general meetings, which I've been to. I have a concern when the city has a representation of possibly up to 96 businesses that are represented by the city, that are members of the Chamber. We have over 400 business licenses in the city of Grand Forks. And if 80% of 120 is 96, it means that the city is putting out $120,000, or sorry, $20,000 a year to assist 96 businesses. And that's, to me, seems like a lot when we've got over 400 business licenses within the city of Grand Forks. I would like to see this Chamber grow. I would like to see it have a much bigger membership. I would expect that after five years, it would have a much bigger membership. It's just, we have to look at how much money are we investing for what is our return? And logically, 96 business licenses that we're spending $20,000 on seems like an awful lot. And that's even aside from the bylaws.
Counselor Byford and Counselor Thompson, then gentleman in the second row.
Yeah, I'm a bit concerned by that statement because at a previous meeting, you'd said that you were instrumental in founding the downtown. Yeah, and the DBA is now asking for the Chamber's funding to be cut and for them to be funded directly from the city. So since you've ceased being on the Chamber, you've removed yourself from that and thrown your efforts into the DBA, it seems a bit conflicting now that you're not comfortable in funding the Chamber, but you want it to go to the DBA, the association that you formed.
I might add that the downtown...
There's been no element of that yet.
No, but the downtown business association represents over 140 businesses. And that's just in the downtown.
I'll address the gentleman in the first row and then afterwards, I would like to ask, DBC, oh, sorry, Counselor Thompson. But I would like to have the DBC, if they would be interested to speak up because your name has been mentioned, your association's been mentioned a lot of times this afternoon and there's been no comment, so I would like to be able, if you have the opportunity, to rebuttal off any of these. So Counselor Thompson, then, sorry, then the gentleman in the second.
Looking at your budget documents that you presented, the city funds and has funded $20,000. But you go from Davidale, Christina Lake. What are you funded from the municipalities and area directors in between?
The regional district funds us $7,500 a year. The village of Midway gives us a free office space as their contribution. And the city of Greenwood funds us $500 a year. Plus they give us Jim on the board with the Board of Trade.
Christina Lake?
Christina Lake is part of the regional district's funding. Vicky G., Rowley, and Grace each give us $2,500, making the $7,500 for regional district.
So I would see where you've got your recognition of Greenwood or Midway.
It reflected in our budget. Yeah, Greenwood ends up in membership for some reason, it's been in that. And the regional district has its own line. And the village doesn't actually give us cash, they give us a premise.
So there, but there's no recognition of that anywhere?
In the letter to you as counsel, we said we value our partnerships with the city of Grand Forks, city of Greenwood, regional district, and the village of Midway. B.C.A.R.C. would like to thank the city for their past support and look forward to your continued support and working together for the better of our communities. And just another comment on communications too, if we want to say another one, is the grant that came to the city for the heritage signage project, I actually asked it to be brought to the Chamber because we are nonprofit and could have applied for that, but the grant was taken to the city instead, so just another...
Take staff time and...
Yeah, when we actually said we would apply for that grant.
I'll address the gentleman, Counselor Hammond, yes.
Thank you, Worship. Jim Nowthorst, City Agreement, I'm a councillor for the city of Greenwood and also past president of the Board of Trade. And I've sat on the regional chamber for, I think, about three or three and a half years now. And I just wanted to clarify that I have never been to a board meeting, a regular board meeting, that was not quorum. In fact, I was broke down at the top of E-hole last winter there and had to get a tow truck to come to Grand Forks to find out that we didn't have quorum. So that was, that's what happened. We have never had a board meeting without quorum. Was that okay? Thank you. So just to clarify that. And also, I also sat on that election there. I was part of, I don't know, actually the one that made the motion to welcome the new board and because ever since I've been on that board and because I belong to a Board of Trade that's been around since 1899, I've always felt that it was the bylaws that the regional chamber was going by were so different than ours and I couldn't get my head around why it was so, why it wasn't inclusive. It was like nobody was invited to the meetings, to the executive meetings, and nobody was talking regional chamber. And I thought, it was just growing pains primarily, I think, right? So when all this happened again with this last election and I got plumped into the chair to run the election because Alan Cooper was in an accident and I never found out until I got to the meeting, it was like, something's wrong here, right? And that's when we started doing the checking. Because I said to Kathy, why are the Board Agreement Board of Trades bylaws and what regional chambers work on so different? We both come under the Board of Trade Act. The Board of Trade Act, just so everybody didn't know, has bylaws and they're very, they're very clear, but they're general, right? And that's why you end up with local bylaws to tailor them to say, we have an association with the city of Grand Forks, or whatever it might be. It's not, it's not to develop them so that they don't include. The bylaws in the regional chamber are not inclusive. This thing with 30 days, 90 days, almost having to take a means testable to become a member. We're all volunteers for God's sake. None of us get paid, right? Except Kathy and a little bit that I get on council. My other, my other job, right? Which I do enjoy, by the way. So I just wanted to say that nobody on that board that I sat with had any nefarious, you know, there was nothing nefarious. We all do this for nothing. We all do it for the best of the boundary, which is what, why, and Kathy will tell you, I've been pounded ever since I got on there. Let's talk boundary, let's not just talk Grand Forks. Because to be honest with you guys, you're a big part of the boundary, right? But you don't have a Grand Forks Chamber of Commerce anymore. It's regional. And that was the thought process I was trying to get through. So, and I've worked, sat on that board with some great people and I think we need to give these guys a chance. These guys, they came to a meeting, put their hand up and there was nobody else wanting to take this on and volunteer. So I think all this publicity that I've read in the Gazette, all what we're doing today has done nothing but hurt us. All of us. And it's going to be really, really hard for this regional chamber to recover from this kind of a reputation. So you know what? A year goes by pretty fast. Let us do the job. None of us are taking any money out of this, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Does the DBA Worship make any comments?
We, I'd like to state first off that we would like to work hand in hand with the Chamber. The reason we came to city was we had some concerns. I can prove with emails that we were submitting our agendas and our minutes to the Chamber since we were requested to last year. And before that, Kathy Korlech had all our minutes to present to the Chamber. There are issues with communication. Several times, we asked for help with events. There were emails, phone calls that weren't in turn. And then I wrote a letter of concern about the election. And so saying that we didn't come forward with our concerns is not true because I did write a letter to Alan Cooper. We were never invited to come before the board and discuss our concerns. So we, you know, we had these concerns and we thought, just to stay out of all this politics and stuff, that we'd rather approach the city for our funding. And that's all I have to say.
Counselor Thompson? Counselor Byford, that gentleman, or there's more?
Through you to Liberal. The DBA has 140 members. Of that 140 members, how many are members of the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce? Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce? And if they are members and concerned about issues with communications and some other things with the Chamber, were they not better represented at that annual general meeting? That really causes some concern as who are we supporting? You've got 140 members. The Chamber has 120 of which 96 are local business. Something is not sitting well with me on this and it's causing more and more concern.
Counselor Byford and the lady in the back row and then Ms. Korlech.
Thanks, Mr. Man. Counselor Tripp made a good suggestion to council this week and that was when we as councilors come in to a new position after an election, that it would be a fabulous idea to have a workshop in Robert's Rules of Order. We should get our policy manual as soon as we start and we should sit down as a group and go through our policy manual, understand what we're operating under. And I think at the time of an election, it would be great to open that up to all boards in the area so that they could get really good training in Robert's Rules of Orders, understand how committees are run. Because as a committee of council, they have no decision-making ability. They have to bring their suggestions back to council and then council makes the final decision. So if the DBC wants something, they can pass that motion at their board, but as a committee, it then has to go to their governing body to make that final decision. And if the final decision isn't what they like, that's just how it is. They're the governing body that gets to make that decision, just like any committee at council doesn't have final say. It's council that has the final say. So I think understanding clearly our responsibilities as a committee member, as a council member, as a board member, and knowing our governing legislation and knowing Robert's Rules of Order really helps to run things a lot smoother.
Lady in the back row, and then the gentleman, either one, one's go first then.
Hello, my name is Cher Wires and I'm a Chamber of Commerce member. I've been involved with the Chamber of Commerce since I moved to this community back in 1998. What I've observed today is a community that has a great deal of support for this organization. I see where there are mistakes that have been made and I see a group that wants to move forward. I myself was very challenged with the Chamber of Commerce. I can recognize what it's like to get your membership out to meetings. You're always dealing with and always will rural British Columbia. You have working entrepreneurs, working during the daytime, families. What I want everyone to put aside is the personal aspect of anything that you're carrying in this room today. What we need in this region is to work together. And I sat on the Regional District AKBLG Association of Kootenay Boundary for regional collaboration. And let me tell you, with 80% of this province in a rural situation, it's imperative, it's imperative that we work together. We have, and I have seen new people stepping to the Board of the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm asking council, deepen your hearts, to take a very serious look. Yes, there's mistakes making, yes, rules have been broken. Let's find out what this board can do for the next year. Let's support them. They know they have to come forward with a proper, or their bylaws. I can see where they were probably filed in the preparation for the opening. Believe me, back in 2009, when the Grand Forks Chamber of Commerce was forced with funding cuts from the city of Grand Forks, that's exactly where we were put, up against the wall. At that time, I approached Wendy McCullough at Community Futures and asked her, with her contacts in the region, would she go forward and see if there is a flavor for a regional chamber? After I spoke with Bonnie, who had formed the regional chamber in the South Okanagan for Oliver, Assoias, and Okanagan Falls. So this isn't anything new. This is something that's going to be the future of the Chambers of Commerce for rural communities because it's very strategic that your funding is so small, so small. Unless your membership, and I was told this back in 1999... Unless your membership, and I was told this back in 1999, unless you're carrying a membership of 500, 500 people, you are going to be working your butts off. And these people are volunteers. And I'm asking you sincerely to put, put aside, yes, these have, there's mistakes here. But I think we need to give this organization the opportunity to show what they can do. And as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I'm certainly going to make every effort to come out as much as I can. I'm busy myself, just like everybody else in the community. We see each other at different tables. And that's my input for today. And I want to thank you all for coming out because this is outstanding to see this kind of support here.
Gentlemen in the back.
Am I?
Go ahead, sir.
My name is Hamilton, James Hamilton. Chamber of Commerce is like a bus. And the bus has 20 seats, and the back couple of seats are a little torn and need to be fixed. And so the, the people that are running the city say, look, get your seats fixed, and then we'll let the bus run. And you don't even have a driver. Oh, yeah, that's a new driver. He's a good driver. Okay, but first, we, we're not going to give you any gasoline. So you get your thing going without the gasoline, without the final funding that you need, and then we'll look at it again. And get yourself together, and we can't let you do anything because you're not going to have the gasoline. You can't run your bus. One other little thing I was going to say, if you think about that, if somebody's running this downtown business, whatever it's called, that's like a little, little van, and says, no, we'll take this first. We'd like the gasoline for now. And then we'll give it, then give it to us. That seems like a, what would you call, conflict of interest? I would say somebody that's on that committee should recuse themselves from voting, like Dean shouldn't be allowed to vote. And I guess Counselor Hamilton would recuse herself because she's on that committee. I don't know if I'm right there, but that's my opinion. With all due respect. Thank you.
Very good.
Just a quick note to Sir Chris. I'm Kathy Korlock. The members of the Downtown Business Committee Association, whatever you want, you don't have to pay to do that. Your business downtown, you're automatically involved. Now, Chamber, you do have to buy a membership. So therefore, the membership is, is not a huge amount. So, but that's the difference in that. So you can have 146 members that pay nothing. They work hard. This group has worked really hard and accomplished all sorts of great things. But the difference being, they don't have to pay membership. Chamber does.
Have to be a member of the Chamber to sit on that?
No, 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 not at all. And I, I agree with, with Cher. It's, Chamber is a really important thing. It's our ambassadorship to the whole area, not just us. And all the things that we do or don't do is, it's, well, it's reflective on every individual that's involved. And then it reflects on our community. So it's really important for us to put our best foot forward and do what we can. And I mean, honestly and truly, yeah, we didn't follow the bylaws that we had. And I'm sorry about that. But that doesn't mean we can't work together as a group, as a community, to go forward because we can. Yeah, and comply. We got to get it together so we can make it work. So whatever happens, it's the way it will be. But yeah, you can't do anything without money, and Kathy is finished. Fortunately, James is volunteering his time. We can't hire a new executive director unless we know we have money. And no money, nobody. And honestly and truly, as a business owner and just life, we are busy people, all of us. So we do need to work together and share the burden. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I would please ask the gallery not to cooperate when we have a case of overfalls. The gentleman in the back, no, I'm just, you're just waiting.
Really, I have nothing to say. I sat, my name is Shannon Pufaley, and I sat on the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce Board for approximately four and a half years. I, I believe that everybody's attention is great here today, but I think I agree with letting the board go ahead, see what they can do. I know there was mistakes made by the sounds of it, but you can't get past this if we sit here, you know, blaming each, everything, all the rules and everything. They can fix that by reviewing the bylaw and all that. Let's just let them see what they can do. I'm very happy to say that I sat on that board. I believe we did great things. We did have our quorum, except for when Jim had, and then we still had it, right? So we just have to put our best face forward, right? This is our community, and I strongly believe in the boundary. I'm the same as Jim. I've always been boundary-driven. So that's what I have to say.
Yeah, I am, thanks for all this input. And I agree, it's so challenging being in rural BC. We're so spread out, and it's really difficult to get people together. We're busy, distances are great, driving conditions are often hazardous. I, I'm not sure what the rules are around a motion, but I would like to move that we reinstate the funding for the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce as of today. And is there a motion on the table? I would like to call the question. Can we read that motion? We're just going to keep circumnavigating the board.
I already voted on that motion to receive the delegation.
Motion to receive.
Motion and to discussion regarding a decision.
Right. I would vote a decision on the matter.
Is a question called on that? Are they recorded?
I'll second her motion, Mr. Mayor. And I'm just wondering if you'd entertain an amendment to that motion to include the recommendation from our acting CIO that says, within the service agreement, that they shall comply and operate within the rules and regulations as defined in their governing legislation of the Board of Trade Act, Part II, and further to comply and operate within the confines of the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce's bylaws as approved by the Ministry of Innovation, Science, and Economic Development as the BRCRC's regulatory body.
I have a second here on that one. Counselor Ross. All in favor of the amendment?
I have a discussion.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor Butler. I, I did think about that, but I felt that maybe that should be an overarching policy of the city itself when we do this kind of funding, that all of the organizations or societies that do get funding fee for service from the city need to do that. So that's something that we should just, a policy that we should put forward as a city, instead of applying it to specifically the, the Chamber at this time. Perhaps because we don't have that policy, we should apply it to the Chamber, and also that they continue to report on a quarterly basis. So I'll, I'll certainly vote in favor, but I would also like to have that fee for service, those who get that policy, that fee for service, something that may, may go just as a given for all organizations or societies that come to us.
Counselor Butler.
Yeah, I would agree with what Counselor Ross has said, and I think it should be written into all of our fee for service agreements, that there has to be an adherence to proper procedure. Although we don't want to nitpick that apart, oh, we're not going to fund you because you did this wrong in your meeting, you know? But as a general practice, to...
To, they have to prove it to the best of their ability that they're complying.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
I just have the resolution read back.
Just voting on the amendment right now. It's on your, on your agenda for today? It's the suggestion from our CIO?
Page three, we're talking page three. First paragraph.
Can we look it up on the screen? Does that seem fair?
Absolutely.
So that Board of Trade Act, Part II, just states that they have to register their bylaws?
And a by button?
Yeah.
Because they are registered right now.
They are not.
Well, we'll make sure that the new ones get officially registered.
Counselor Tripp?
Thank you, Mayor Korlock. Yeah. I mean, if this language is put into the fee for service agreement, which is coming up for, yeah, review, and it's supposed to be signed, I think it's June 30th, if this language could be, you know, added into that, the new fee for service agreement, and then the motion that we're making today wouldn't, wouldn't include it, but, or could even maybe mention that, that it's going to be included. Just wording surrounding complying with, you know, the fee for service. There are bylaws or something like that, as opposed to having every single word in there, would be my suggestion.
But again, it should be an independent motion of the amended law to the motion to the Chamber.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just wondering, you mentioned before that there was, you had discussed this issue with Regional Chamber, and I'm just wondering, or with the Regional District. And I thought that maybe members were going to be here today. I just want to know what their stand is, or have they indicated?
Been diversified, just like, not as diversified and controversial as it is here, but there have been comments made regarding to the Chamber's issue with this election and bylaws. That's all I was to say at this point. Nothing has gone forward yet because they are watching what the city is going to do in our place.
So if you like, I can withdraw that amendment, and we can put it forward as two separate amendments, and just vote on the original motion.
A motion to reinstate the funding for the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce. Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce.
All in favor? All those opposed?
I don't think so, ma'am.
Motion's carried. Counselor Hamilton?
She's voted in favor. She did vote.
I would just like to comment that my vote against is no reflection on people sitting at the board. My vote against is still because the way against the Constitution bylaws, pending all precautions, the feedback I have received from tax pairs, is that they can't support funding an organization that doesn't follow the rules of the Constitution. And I could have that comment reported, please.
Well, we've already passed this, we've gone now to other things.
Similarly, my reasoning also will be because of the fact that I've always been an individual, that is always stuck by principles, factual statements, and fortunately, all good faith representing now a community of almost 4,000 constituents, I find it very hard to take that role on something that has not been called, no direct, towards anybody else, no individual, just a general statement. I'll administrate shooter, and I intend to stay that way, especially when I represent a community this size. Not my personal agenda. Counselor Butler?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to then put forward the second motion to include in the service agreement for the BRCRC, Section A that's up there on the board. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering whereabouts in the agreement, our CIO was wanting to consider putting this. It looks like she had an A, like she knew which section she wanted it to go in. Any worship, I believe it was going to be talked around in the fee for service requirements. I'll have to take a really good look and see exactly where the best fit is in there, just to make sure that it is in the right spot.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
All those in favor? Any one opposed?
No, I'm approving that because I'm not opposed to the fee for service. I'm opposed to a fee for service at this time until there's an HGM, a legal EGM. But I'm in, I'm in agreement with the amendment to the fee for service to the organization, and it should be added to any...
Did he order to reinstate the same? I didn't, no. As she said, because she didn't vote.
She abstained, she didn't vote, why?
Kind of staying on the community charter. Anyway, Mr. Mayor, I have kids to pick up, so can I motion to adjourn?
Before we do that, is there any other comments from the gallery or the media?
Thank you. You've done some awesome work getting this far through a difficult process. Good for you for, for getting this far.
I would like to thank you all for taking the time, and you will not be disappointed. We're going to work hard to prove this Chamber won the best round. And those that know me know I'm a hard worker, and I'm a mighty diligence. Thank you for that.
I'd like to also thank you for listening to us today. I much appreciate that.
Thank you all.